Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Bettendorf. This is our city council meeting. It's Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock P. M. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors? Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Well, yesterday was Scott Webster's birthday, and today was Denise Enfield's birthday. And if either one of them were here, I would have been happy to sing happy birthday to them. I know Scott will be joining us, but we'll skip over that. In favor of our traditional pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Bettendorf Presbyterian Church, Pastor Troy Winder, please remain standing after the pledge. And remove any caps or headdresses you may have.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Troy, please remain standing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you, sir.
And let us pray. Oh, glorious one, we give you thanks and praise for this opportunity to gather together. We thank you, God, for, for the chance to deliberate the business that is before us. We pray, holy one, that all that we would do, all that we would say, all that we are, would bring you glory in this, in this body, in our individual little corners of your kingdom. We pray all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Pastor Troy. Great to see you. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is for Motorcycle Awareness Month. And for that proclamation, I'd like to invite Keith Nims to join me in the center of the room. Is Keith here?
Yes.
I thought I saw Keith.
Welcome back.
Nice to see you.
This is Keith Nims, District Fifteen, Abate of Iowa Coordinator. And we're going to talk a little bit about Motorcycle Awareness Month as it starts to get warm in the spring, and you're out riding. Whereas the people of Bettendorf have an enduring regard for the preservation of life on our streets and highways. And whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month is being observed throughout the nation. And whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our city should join with the Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, Abate of Iowa, in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorcycle awareness. And whereas during this month and all months, all streets and highway users should unite in safe sharing of roadways throughout the city of Bettendorf and the state of Iowa. And whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month provides citizens of Bettendorf an opportunity to commit themselves to being more alert and aware of other motor vehicle drivers, and especially those operating motor vehicles, motorcycles. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-two as Motorcycle Awareness Month. In our community, I urge all motor vehicle operators to join in the effort to keep our streets and highways safe and start seeing motorcycle.
Here.
Here.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here. If you want to have the floor, say a few words, Keith. You can do that.
Thank you for having us. What Abate stands for is a brotherhood aimed towards education. And we do a lot of motorcycle rider education. Go into the kids that are going into driver's ed. We go in there and do classes for that. And just a little something I always like to say is, look twice, save life. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. Take care. Ride safe. All right, for our zip code celebration proclamation, I'd like to call up here the idea man.
Yeah.
Scott Nauman. In a collaborative effort. Scott came up with a great idea, and we're here to promote and celebrate our zip code party. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the city of Bettendorf's zip code is five-two-seven-two-two, and May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two coincides with the same not to happen for another hundred years. And whereas the city of Bettendorf invites everyone to participate in a week-long zip code celebration to commemorate this once-in-a-lifetime event with family, friends, and fun by patronizing the participating Bettendorf businesses that may be found at www.betevents.org. And we'll pull that up for you here in a second. And whereas the zip code celebration allows the Bettendorf business community to use this opportunity to promote themselves to the general public by holding events at their business location with open houses, sales, cookouts, scavenger hunts, tapping parties, tournaments of all kinds, races, walks, music, and more. And whereas the city of Bettendorf is proud of its community and its community partners and thank each and everyone for their participation. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two as Zip Code Day in Bettendorf. And I encourage all of our citizens and businesses to take pride in their community and help celebrate this once-in-a-lifetime event.
Here.
Here.
So sixty, sixty-five different things happening. Faith-based communities getting involved to do a really cool deal down at Veterans Memorial Park. We can talk some more about next week. All five breweries with their five-two-seven-two-two brews. So there's a huge event list here. You can scroll down. This will start a celebration of a week that will culminate the following Saturday, the first Saturday in May, at the Be Downtown Event in downtown Bettendorf. So there's stuff to do from Friday, May twenty-seventh, all day and evening. The evening will be at the Tangled Wood and some other businesses, but the centerpiece will be at the Tangled Wood. They've got bands all afternoon and evening. All five of the five-two-seven-two-two brews from our five breweries will be there on tap. Lots of cool stuff happening from all of our different businesses. You can see a lot of businesses who you wouldn't necessarily think, hey, let's go to the Family Credit Union for a party. But they're doing something more, more bank oriented for Dunk Tank. But everybody's gotten involved, and we're really pleased. So Jeff Ryder, our Director of Economic Development, is going through this because this is his baby. We might have had an idea.
That's right.
But we passed the baton, and Jeff's been doing an awesome job with it. So Jeff, we appreciate it.
Yeah, you gotta get a picture.
Yeah, get up and get a pic.
Well, let's switch sides because last time, I think, was this way. I put it for this side.
All right.
I think Jeff thinks to be on it.
That's what I was thinking.
I was thinking that, too.
Thank you. And this is yours for safekeeping. Thank you so much.
Good job, guys.
It's a really cool deal.
All right, now to the business at hand. The next item on tonight's agenda is public requests of counsel. If there's anyone here who wants to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, we'd like to hear from you. If you would please approach the podium in the back, state your name and your address, and then provide your request to city council. Who wants to open us up tonight?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Randy Childers, and I live at thirty-fifty Southampton Drive. I'd just like to read you some thoughts tonight. I didn't want to miss any points, so I'm just going to read you what I've written down here. I'm going to start off with a statement. It looks good on paper until you see how it affects the local people. I moved to Bettendorf over twenty-six years ago. I looked at Davenport, Moline, Rock Island, and Bettendorf for possible places to purchase a home. I chose Bettendorf, number one, because of public school system. Number two, how clean the city was. Number three, the local crime rate. And number four, the amenities it provided to its citizens. And the fitness center was on top of my list. And there seems to be two arguments about selling and closing the fitness center. First of those is the city should not be in the fitness business. Palmer Hills softball and baseball fields, skate park, Splash Landing, public parks, outdoor pickleball and tennis courts, all of these are amenities which should be considered fitness activities. And all could be considered fitness businesses, and it takes some financial backing to run and maintain them. The other argument is that the fitness center loses money on a yearly basis. Let's look at the numbers, and I obtained these numbers from the budget binder at the Bettendorf Library. Twenty-twenty-one fiscal year community improvement program money spent. Palmer Hills, five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Fitness Center, fifty-five thousand dollars. Splash Landing, fifty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-one-twenty-two fiscal year major project improvements. Palmer Hills, seven-hundred thousand dollars. The following is a four-year average of losses based on the financial data that I looked at at the Bettendorf Library. Splash Landing is losing three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars on average. Palmer Hills is losing three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars on average. Fitness Center is losing three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars on average. Family Museum is losing one-point-three-five, three, one-point-three-five-zero million dollars a year. In two fiscal years, one million, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars was spent on Palmer Hills besides losing three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Seems like the Family Museum and Palmer Hills are the issues with losses and spending, not the fitness center. Conclusion, I want to give you an oversight of how I use the fitness center. I play at the fitness center. I play tennis at the fitness center three nights a week. I also manage three USTA tennis team league teams. And USTA stands for United States Tennis Association. These teams compete with other teams from various cities in Iowa for a chance to move on and compete at a national level against other states. I have over twenty players on my three teams, and they all play at the fitness center. If tennis were to end at the fitness center, my three nights a week and the team tennis would also end. I am only one person with one story about how things would affect me if the fitness center closed or was sold. There are seven-hundred memberships at the fitness center with six-hundred-and-ninety-nine stories to be told like my own. It looks good on paper until you see how it affects the local people. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you, Randy. One rule with our public request of counsel is there will be no outburst and clapping and whistling. So if you want to be heard, certainly you may. Let's have some decorum. Thank you. Who's next? Does anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? Okay, we'll close our public hearing, and let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is actually a scheduled public hearing. This is with regard to our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget amendment. Thank you, Jason, for going through this in detail with us last evening. Is there anything, did you receive any questions or anything you want to straighten out before it comes before council this evening?
Nothing to clear up on my end. I can do a quick summary if you'd like, but...
Any questions for Jason after last night? I can't believe that we, unless you've got a specific question. Jason, I think we're fine. Let's open the public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay, let's open the public hearing with regard to our budget amendments. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on the budget amendments as described last evening? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, move to the resolution. Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget amendment. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on the budget amendment? Obviously, it's pretty routine at this time of the year. All right, Jason did a must-do a bang-up job in the last night's briefing. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved your budget amendments. Thank you, sir. Let's move to our reconstruction project on Kennelworth Drive. Brian Schmidt, our Director of Public Works, what's happening on Kennelworth?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kennelworth Drive is kind of unique in the fact that when it's just west of Eighteenth Street. And when you drive in off Eighteenth Street, it splits to one cul-de-sac to the south and actually two cul-de-sacs to the north. This particular project is reconstructing the two northern cul-de-sacs in full-depth concrete.
Okay, any questions from council for Brian before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing on the Kennelworth Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this item? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Let's move to a resolution. Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the specifications in form of contract for the Kennelworth Drive reconstruction project. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Part of our ongoing efforts to keep the streets in good repair, seeing none. Michelle, please call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved Kennelworth. Brian, off to work you go. Let's take a look at our next public hearing. This is with regard to the Fifteenth Street retraining, retaining wall. Not only am I struggling with allergies, but my tongue is apparently in the way. Brian, would you help us with this one?
Thank you, Your Honor. This particular retaining wall is on the west side of Fifteenth Street, which is on the east side of the Abbey. This has been an issue for several years, so this is removing and replacing this failed retaining wall that consists of approximately two-hundred-and-eighty lineal feet. It'll be reconstructed with a, those medium-sized, gravity, concrete, Lego block-type wall and should last for many years.
Is many more than five?
Yes, sir.
Good, because the last one didn't work out so good. I appreciate it, sir. Any questions for Brian on this retaining wall that clearly needs work? Seeing none, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay, let's open the public hearing with regard to the Fifteenth Street retaining wall reconstruction project. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving plans, specifications, and form of contract for the Fifteenth Street retaining wall reconstruction product, project. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Thank you, Brian, and staff for your good work, and let's get this one done. All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Brian, unanimous approval. Off to work. The next public hearing is an amendment to a planned unit development plan at thirty-four oh-three and thirty-four fifty-one Devil's Glen Road. Our Director of Community Development is with us tonight, Mark Hunt. Can you just bring us up to speed briefly, and we'll open the public hearing?
Yes, Your Honor, be glad to. We did talk about this previously. I think it was three meetings back now. This is a planned unit development. There's been some minor changes of, of use within the PUD over the years that were never codified or reviewed by this, by this council. So we're just kind of updating those and then also clarifying the location of a new use, which will be a smashed pizza in this property, which is right south of the Power Wash on Devil's Glen Road, if you're familiar with that location. They have the parking they need. They meet all the other bulk standards. It's good to go. We just kind of wanted to get that PUD updated, acknowledge this new use, and then verify the parking, which is good.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
Yes, sir.
All right. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing with regard to a change in our planned unit development at thirty-four oh-three, thirty-four fifty-one Devil's Glen Road. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Let's close that public, excuse me, hearing and move to the resolution for Councilmember Brown to present.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a minor amendment to the PUD plan for thirty-four oh-three dash thirty-four fifty-one Devil's Glen Road. To it, the PUD plan does not waive any applicable city, state, and federal provisions as required by law. No future changes in use to occupy the thirty-four oh-three dash thirty-four fifty-one Devil's Glen Road commercial building, which would require more than the allocated spaces on site. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Baden, can you please step in for us for Councilmember Webster on this third and final reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance revoking the exists, existing Duck Creek Development Plan, Unit Development Plan, and amending the Bettendorf, Iowa Zone Map by reverting the zoning district classification to R-one, single-family resident district for twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
This is a third and final reading. We've already had two plus a presentation to council. But if there's any comment by any council people at this time. Seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved the third and final reading, and that will not come back before us. Next on the agenda is another public hearing. This is with regard to the rezoning of twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. We had a presentation on this a couple of weeks ago. Our Community Development Director is here. Mr. Hunt, did you have anything to add on this?
Thanks, Your Honor. Just one slight change in your packet, which I think you all saw, is that we do have an updated concept plan that comprehends the turn lane that we want, the deceleration and turn lane that we wanted to see following our P and Z meeting or brought up at our P and Z meeting. So that's, that's in your packet. It includes that, that turn lane. We still have the thirty-five-foot setback, and we have a turn lane that we wanted to see, and we think will help with the access to the property.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark in response to that new information from council? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to rezoning twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. Anyone here wish to be heard on this item?
Your Honor, I think Taylor Beswick has some information you'd like to put on the screen for our speaker.
Thank you. While he's doing that, you can feel free to state your name and address whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Rick Murphy, and I live at three-eight-nine-two Deer Trail Road. I'd spoken, spoken previously at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I wanted to also share my thoughts here. That is actually, that's the one from the planning and zoning. I have some updated slides. Thank you. And it's very appropriate here that I pause once again to thank Taylor Beswick for all the assistance he's given me. I've lived in the city for twenty-four years, but I know nothing about zoning. I think this is my first council meeting except when I came for my sons for their community, citizenship and the community merit badge, so I was totally unfamiliar with the process. He's been tremendous support and assisted me, and I think it's particularly noteworthy to mention his assistance because obviously I oppose this zoning change, and that's not the city's position. Yet Taylor's been, assisted me every time I've reached out to him. I'm not sure in every city if you oppose what was proposed by the city, they would be that cooperative, and I think it merits mentioning it this time.
Thank you. I think that's something that we are very proud of, so I appreciate that, and welcome back to City Hall.
Thank you. Now, what I tried to do in addition, after the zoning mean was tie this more to the zoning factors that you look at. And I listed there, and the first item I wanted to talk to was whether or not this conforms to the comprehensive plan for Bettendorf. So if you could go to the next slide, please. And I highlighted the current and future uses. This does come from the plan. On the left-hand side is figure one-point-one, and the other one is one-point-four. In particular, I want to draw your attention, if you start at Eighteenth Avenue and go up to Middle Road, down to Devil's Glen, and then across to Central, that kind of highlights the area. The color scheme changed a little bit, but in the map on the left-hand side, green represents parks, blue is schools and public areas. If you see in the lower right-hand side, that's Devil's Glen Park is the big green blob. Slightly above it is a red one, which represents a trailer park. And then across the street would be the subject property at twelve-hundred Devil's Glen. As you can see in that box I've highlighted, it shows the current uses, all single-family residents, which includes the subject property, which I think is also consistent with how it's been taxed through the years. If you slide to the right-hand side, a lot of things changed in this map. For a lot of the green dropped out of it. But if you look again at the lower right-hand corner, there's Devil's Glen Park fortunately still. Then there's, above it is an orange block, and across the way is a subject property, another orange block. And I point that out because under the comprehensive plan, that represents a middle intensity usage. And under that plan, that does not include apartment complexes. So the addition of three apartment complexes in this plan makes this proposed plan inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for Bettendorf. Now, as was discussed in the last meeting, within the designation of medium-use zoning for the city, that incorporates a number of different levels of use, including high, the high intensity. But as the plan envisioned the development of Bettendorf, a red square, a red color on the right-hand side would represent a high-intensity use, which is what this would be because it includes apartment complexes, and that was not envisioned by the plan. So for the first item, this is not consistent with the plan. And when I run through the concerns about the project, I think you can see, at least to me, the wisdom of not having that high density of a development in this particular area. If you could go to the next slide, please. The next fact I want to talk about, since it doesn't meet the exact particulars, is it's still consistent with the scope and general vision of the plan. If you go to the next slide, please. And I would submit to the council that it is not. When you look at, this quote here comes directly from the comprehensive plan, "The quality of life is an economic development tool." And one of the goals of the plan is to create development and enhance the green space throughout the city. The pictures I show there are taken from the plan itself. On the lower left-hand corner, that's Devil's Glen Park. That came from page seventy-four. It talks in that section about cultural and recreational activities. Design amenities such as trails and parks give a community its unique nature. Were this plan to go ahead, then across from that directly, you would see three large apartment buildings, which would not be consistent with the green quality of it. The plan did discuss the general need for Bettendorf to grow and anticipate a lot of growth in Bettendorf, which has occurred over the last few years. It identified the most likely location for those would be further north, which has turned out to be true, and also in the downtown area, but not in this particular area. There's really no discussion except for the listing that this development should, area should be developed to no greater than townhouses. The plan also goes into extensive detail about the required acreage to meet those growth needs. I won't go into all the details, but they're within the plan. It identified three thousand acres that were needed to support growth in Bettendorf for the next twenty years, but pointed out there's over five thousand acres. So there's more than enough land. The quote was more land in the city, within the city limits than is necessary to meet the twenty-year expected needs. So were this property not developed to the level of intensity that is proposed, it would have no impact on the ability of Bettendorf to continue to grow and meet its needs. I would also point out that when I looked at the two maps, this was the only parcel identified where you actually had an increase in density, and particularly an increase in density within a predominantly residential area. I would submit to the council then, why is that necessary? I mean, is there truly a housing shortage for apartments in this area? I would submit the true nature, the true shortage in this area is actually for the homes that are in that area, somewhere on top of the hill in Central. The plan, the comprehensive plan noted thirty percent of the homes in Bettendorf in two thousand seventeen were in the hundred thousand to hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar range. Times have changed. Prices have increased. I doubt you can, it'd be hard-pressed to find any home under two-hundred thousand dollars in Bettendorf or even two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Really, the best use for this property would be consistent with its current zoning to allow for the development of homes consistent with that area. Even within Bettendorf, we, this weekend went to the Parade of Homes and went down by McManus Park, which my parent, my kids used to refer to as Rocket Park, an area where they have these smaller homes. But even in that area, the homes that are being developed now were in the four-hundred, four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollar range. And development of this nature will definitely increase the Duck Creek Parkway and the surrounding community. So that's why I would submit that this is not consistent with the overall vision of the plan as well. Could you go to the next page? There's a number of different reasons for that, and they all kind of run together into these three different factors. There's a number of different reasons for that, and they all kind of run together into these three different factors here. So I decided to highlight them all together to kind of keep it as a group and hopefully keep my presentation moving a little bit. If you go on to the next slide? Traffic issues are a significant issue. It's a heavily trafficked area. I was not aware, there was some discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission, about possibly having a turning lane. I've not seen that. Would very much like to hear more about that because that's going to have an impact on those of us. If it's going to reduce the number of lanes on Devils Glen, it's going to have a significant impact on our ability to go through the area. These pictures I took yesterday, they were between four oh five and four fifteen, so it's not even the heaviest traffic times of the area. As I noted, there's two schools within the area. When there, people are going to school, or kids are getting let out of school, it's very busy. Busy when our conic gets done, busy at five o'clock, so it's extremely busy area. Lots of accidents have occurred in those areas, and one of my neighbors may come up and talk about that more because he lives actually on Devils Glen Road. And I think the difficulty of the traffic, we've had situations where accidents have knocked out power, and to increase the number of cars driving from that area would just exasperate the significant traffic issues that are there, which goes back to the soundness of the idea in the plan to limit this to just townhomes and not have a heavy, intense development of apartment buildings. Next slide, please? The other challenge to this area is where it sits, right above the bike path. And the comprehensive plan went through and identified a number of different sensitive areas. Unfortunately, the PDF didn't blow up very well, so I couldn't tell if this was located in a designated sensitive area or immediately adjacent to it within a stone's throw. But regardless, the plan identified those areas that should be special treatment or consideration, floodplains, wetlands, and the nature, and that those areas should not be developed. So I would submit that to not only develop, but increase the level of density within an area this close to a sensitive area. In the lower left-hand corner, there's a sign there that it's within the Duck Creek watershed. The middle picture shows the nature of the property too, how it's fairly flat. Most of it is not developed in the past. Most of the rainwater then would go into the property. Now there's a concern about running into the creek. My understanding is it is currently in a floodplain, so no development can occur until such time as FEMA changes that designation. That being the case, I would submit that until that designation occurs, no approval for this, any zoning change should be conditional until such time as that FEMA designation changes, or it should be deferred. Also, regarding stormwater and any additional areas to the creek, this is a very popular area. I've talked to neighbors who say kids often play in the creek and swim in there. Adding stormwater to it coming off an apartment complex causes significant concerns for the quality of that. I know there's been some discussion about it, but until further site plans are developed, I would propose deferring any zoning change. Another thing that occurred at the last meeting, someone pointed out the unique geological features there, which is represented in the lower right-hand corner. On this one, I'll have to read a little bit because the individual identified that there's some unique geological features there. Piqued my interest, so I surfed on the Internet to find an article from the Quad City Times back in two thousand nine, identifying the unique geological features around Mossy Point, which are normally found more in the Wisconsin area, not here in Iowa. Stoneout copies going back to the Devonian period, four hundred and fifteen to three hundred and sixty million years ago, or the Pennsylvania period. So again, it just reinforces what a unique area this world is, and I'm concerned the heavy development in this area, increasing the density beyond what was proposed in the comprehensive plan, would just be a detriment to this area and the overall quality of it. Next slide, please? And the last area of concern is just the overall impact on the Duck Creek Parkway. The comprehensive plan talks extensively about the highlights of Bettendorf, and time and time again comes back to the trails. As I note there, it mentioned trails over eighty times, numerous pictures citing the Duck Creek Parkway. The picture in the lower left-hand corner comes from the comprehensive guide as well, and it talks about stressing the character and the attributes of the areas, and lists a number of them, starting off with the parks and trails. And yet, this development here would be, to my knowledge, as I'm trying to think through it, the biggest and most intense development that's occurred along Duck Creek Parkway in a long time, maybe in Bettendorf's history, when you're talking about the area from the eastern border up to I-74. Thinking through it in my mind, I mean, across the street from Devils Glen Park, over the creek and up on the bluff, there's a park, there is an apartment complex, but there's trees that cover that for most of the year, and also you can't access the bike path from there, whereas this one would be right on top looming over the bike path and really impact the quality of it. I point out a recent newspaper article and discussed how Davenport described the Parkway as an oasis within their city, and they wanted to enhance it and increase it. They're looking for ways to expand it. And yet here, we're looking for ways to increase the density of development around it, deviating from the comprehensive guide would point out. And there's really been no discussion of the impact of that. The guide also talks about when our trails pass through heavy industrial areas, parking lots, there should be something to reduce the intensity, and there's been no discussion, what is going to happen if this development goes forward to ensure that you're not constantly surrounded? As I have the picture in the middle there shows, if you're looking at the creek, the picture behind, next to it on the right-hand side would be is if you turned around. So is the result of this project going to be that whenever you're on the bike path, you keep your eyes on the creek? Because if you turn around, you're just going to see a larger apartment complex. Will there be noise or light issues from it? How is that going to attract from the tranquility of it? I think quite significantly is why I would recommend to the board to disapprove this zoning change. And as I reviewed some of the benefits of it that I identified, I would disagree with that because most of all this fails, criteria number seven is that rezoning does not benefit the public. It just develops, benefits the developer. There was talk of the benefits of developing new lands and streets. Well, clearly, there's going to be no streets in this area. It's a landlocked area. It's going to increase traffic anywhere, but you're not going to create more areas where people can drive through and reduce congestion. Talks about providing housing options, but our apartment building's really what's lacking. Down the hill, there's an apartment complex that's already closed. I would say what really is needed is housing consistent with that within the area, like there is up on the hill in Central along Devils Glen there, of the smaller home size rather than the larger homes that are being built in most of the city. That's really the pressing need here. Talking to friends of ours who, children are grown and looking to buy their own house, finding an affordable house for a new couple in Bettendorf is extremely difficult. Let's talk about goal E, enhancing community design and character. But if you look at building this in this particular area, it's not going to enhance the character of the neighborhood because the intensity is so out of whack with what occurs in the rest of the area, both as you move west along Central, and also as you move up Devils Glen. And on the right-hand side, you'll see it's all single-family homes. There's some discussion about promoting use of the Duck Creek Parkway, and it may be convenient for the apartment complex, people who live there to go on the Parkway, but it's really then a public asset. The Parkway is using to benefit a private organization, whereas those of us who also use the Parkway, our experience will be significantly detracted because now we have this large apartment complex looming over the bike path. And I would point out, I don't think there's an apartment complex this close to the bike path, certainly not in Bettendorf, and I don't think anywhere else. And last is a question about attracting young people, but if you look at the location of the apartment complex and some of the considerations Bettendorf has had in building other places, such as the condos next to the Starbucks, you can't walk to anywhere from this. There's no restaurants nearby. There's no other activities. If you want to enjoy the amenities exist, you're going to have to make an extremely difficult left-handed turn onto Devils Glen Road as traffic increases to go up to where all the desirable things are in the area. So on the whole, I would submit that this is not a zoning change in the best interest of the public. I would recommend that the board reject it. If you are considering it, I would ask that it be deferred. At this point, the traffic study has not been shared with the public. It's, I understand it just came out, and it's pretty new. But I think the public deserves to hear that, and also, we're still waiting to hear on the FEMA permit whether there'll be a change to allow, whether it continues to be a floodplain. So the project can't go forward, so to defer any action on this will not impact the project. And that's what I recommend the board do.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else who wishes to be heard on this topic? Go ahead, approach the podium in the back, state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. I'd just like to preface my remarks by saying I have a great deal of respect for you as the council and your staff, the good work you do. I can only imagine how busy you all keep with the amount of development that has been coming to our community. And if I didn't say it, my name is Jeff Anderson. I live at thirty-five-eight-eight Deer Trail Road, just around the corner from the proposed development. I'd also like to mention that I think it's encouraging to see this site that people for many years have kind of wondered what's going to happen there, receive attention of the development community, to see it begin to get cleaned up. However, I think the proposal, as was mentioned just prior to me, has deficiencies. I moved to Bettendorf with my family about twenty-two years ago, and that was for a number of reasons. But we love our neighborhood. We love the community. And one of the things that really drew us to our particular location was the quick access to the Duck Creek Bike Path, to Devil Glen's Park, and the beautiful natural surroundings that Bettendorf was wise enough to embrace and build into the regional asset that it really is. And I have a couple of prepared comments, and I'll try not to repeat what was said immediately before me. But I think it is important that you hear from the residents, who were probably most highly impacted by the potential development. And I would also like to say I am in no way anti-development. This may sound a bit like NIMBYism, not in my backyard. But I think reasonable people can draw a line as to, you know, what is good development, what is not good development, and potentially what might be on the line and through some good work in terms of design and planning could become a better development. I will say I do have some concerns in that rezoning to R4 would seem to be incompatible with the city's comprehensive plan to the extent the proposed concept plan, and I'm going off of what I saw online. So if things have changed, I apologize and would amend my remarks. But based on what I've seen, I would not say it's complementary to the surrounding area or consistent with the surrounding area. And by that specifically, I mean the scale, bulk, mass, and height of the proposed buildings are inconsistent with surrounding development and properties within the area. The intensity of the proposed development could have negative impact on the Duck Creek Bike Path and Devils Glen Park, both regional natural assets that support Bettendorf's quality of life and really make Bettendorf a draw for the overall Quad City community and the Bay State region. The proposed, what I'll call the proposed development envelope. And I want to be careful here. I don't want to get into semantics or play games with words or with the code. And I think the staff report was very clear in identifying that the proposed development meant the twenty-five-hundred per square foot threshold for each unit of the proposed development. But as was mentioned before me, the site suffers from a number of development-related issues or potential development-related issues. And just for purposes of example or illustration, if you netted out the part of the plus or minus ten-acre site that is within easement for the bike path, within current floodway, flood fringe, or overall floodplain delineated area, as well as, and I'll allude to this in a moment or two, it's been my observation over the years that there's been a fair amount of fill put on the western edge of the development envelope of the site. If you begin to net those things out, and even if you leave the fill area in there and just look at the part on the site plan where the buildings are proposed, that you drop down to something like less than a thousand per square feet per unit. And I understand that the total property includes the bike path. But as they say, you know, when you begin to remove sticks from the bundle of sticks that are property rights, there is public interest in that land, even though underlying it may be privately owned to the extent that rights have not been vested with the community. Another item related to those, the city zoning code states that, "As compared to ULI, urban low intensity, the UMI, urban medium intensity, encourages closer proximity between transportation, housing, and shopping choices." This would seem to suggest that higher-density residential development within the UMI character area should be located in closer proximity to commercial areas and other urban services. And I compliment the city and staff for having that guidance within the plan and the code. And it really does make sense, if you think of a high-density, intensity urban area, to have a walkable area where high-density residential can be in close proximity to shopping, to services, to schools, so as not to overload transportation routes, too many cars on the road, that kind of thing. But in this location, and there may be some enthusiastic folks who would walk from this location up to Hy-Vee to get their groceries, but I doubt that's going to be the rule, that I think you're going to be dumping an awful lot of traffic out on a roadway that may not be prepared for that. "The subject site appears to have limited development potential based on the following: traffic concerns related to existing traffic, future traffic from the proposed development, roadway grade, and lines of sight." It's encouraging to hear that there has been or is underway a traffic study. So if that takes care of those issues, great. I have not seen anything that would, to me, suggest that that's the case, though. Floodplain issues, in terms of the regulatory floodway, the hundred-year floodplain, and flood fringe all come into play on this site, and was noted before me and in the staff's report, that those appear to be in place at least until sometime later in two thousand twenty-three. And with all due respect, it would seem to be premature to rezone or upzone a property prior to those things being modified. And as I mentioned a moment ago, onsite fill under at least three of the proposed buildings. And I would guess the engineering folks will ask for some kind of geotech study to look at core samples for the soil suitability. I would have to believe, given the fill that's been put on the site, the alluvial soils underlying that most likely. It doesn't seem to be out of the realm of the possible that an engineered foundation or caissons down to bedrock, you know, may be something that comes into play that could quite likely render the development non-feasible. "In addition to all the foregoing, the concept site plan indicates an extremely high and pervious surface. Nearly all of the developed portion or proposed development of the property would be covered by buildings and parking." And I appreciate that staff indicated the stormwater requirements, and since it flows directly into the creek, that there's not a retention-detention site. But even with water quality control measures put into place, there will be significant water flowing into Duck Creek, which could have negative impacts on the quality of creek, the geologic formations that have been mentioned, potential flood increase downstream, that all would be negative to the creek and its surrounding watershed area. So to wrap things up, if I was making a recommendation or drawing a conclusion, I think I would acknowledge and thank staff for the initial recommendation to rezone the site to R1. That would seem to certainly be compatible with the existing area, with the comprehensive plan, and move in the appropriate direction. "Given the traffic, floodplain, and fill issues, it would seem to be prudent to not upzone the property for higher-density development until such time as it can be demonstrated that the site is capable of providing a carrying capacity sufficient for development with a greater intensity and density than single-family residential development." And I'll just close with one final thought, that infill development sites, which this has been identified as, by their very nature deserve a high level of scrutiny to ensure that site development is harmonious and consistent with the surrounding developed areas. I think that's reasonable land use planning accepted throughout the country, perhaps beyond. And I believe your comprehensive plan and zoning code reflect- comprehensive plan and zoning code reflect and underscore that very point. So again, as with the speaker before me, it would seem to be premature to increase the zoning from R1 to R4 to accommodate the level of density and the level of intensity in this particular location, given the surrounding land uses of low-density residential parks, bike path, and natural areas of significance. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to share those thoughts with you. Again, I greatly appreciate the work that you, the council, and your staff do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Good to see you. Anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing. As we've come out of the public hearing...
There's several.
Well, when I ask if there's somebody else, I'd really appreciate it. If you wanted to speak, you went to the podium. We'll reopen the meeting, but I'm not going to wait five or 10 minutes in between speakers.
Thank you, Your Honor, city council members, staff, everyone here. My name is Jeff Weindrich. I'm Bettendorf resident my entire life. My parents, Archie and Helen Weindrich, who are deceased but of pleasant memory, were members of the park commission and greatly involved in the planning over many, many years with our comprehensive plan for park development, and I think we've got something that's pretty special in our town. I'm a real estate broker, and I'm also brother of one of the owners of the property, my brother Steve Weindrich, who acquired it from my younger brother Kent Weindrich, who had a blacktop company in industrial use on the site, and he bought it from a Taylor Construction Company who had that use from when I was a little kid. Some points have been brought up here that are kind of interesting, but they probably lack a solid basis. One, there's an easement agreement that the city has with the property owner. This particular site, all of the bike path property and a good portion of the creek property is private property. It's owned by the current owner of the property, and it will be in the future owned by the subsequent owner of the property. That easement agreement was negotiated in good faith by the city with the property owner, and I believe a copy of it's available through the city staff. It was probably included in the application, and it has a couple of items that affect some of the comments that have been brought up by a few of the speakers here. One has to do with the land that is to be included when you factor the development, and it says specifically in the easement agreement that the entire parcel, including the easement area, is to be included when you commute the density factor for development on the site. And then the other has to do with groundwater, and again, it speaks of that too, the fact that there would not be a requirement for, you know, groundwater retention because of the location adjacent, and not just adjacent, owning where the floodway runs through the property. At the time when the comprehensive plan was redone, there were numerous public meetings and lots of discussion. This particular site was initially brought up to be R1, and after much discussion with the recommending body that the city had hired, and then subsequently with the city council folks that were in those jobs at that time, that plan was changed, and when it came before the city council, it was approved as it is now, which is medium density. And this site has for many, many years, and I'm assuming some of those years are prior to when some of these folks purchased homes, had a planned unit development zoning, which does allow for a significant type of density construction. We've had, over the years, people look at buildings, building buildings there that would go much higher than this proposed development and would encompass the ability to provide a scenic view of that area all the way, you know, up to Middle Park when you get up, you know, four or five stories there. That could have happened, and this is a much lesser, lower type of development. There's a lot of discussion about public use, and it should be noted that all along this process of the property becoming available for purchase, the city has been fully informed and known and available to always step in and be a buyer. And there has been no solid interest that I know from anybody in a large public gathering or from any staff that I know of where the city said, hey, we want to buy that property, but when it's on the market, everybody sitting here can buy it. And we've had recent people from Chicago, I had a developer come in, he walked the site, he had a local business guy who's in a lease, but he has a commercial business along Duck Creek, and they were looking at a mixed-use commercial residential site development. I had someone else that made contact. Their interest was, hey, can we buy the corporation that owns this? We want to continue, and Decker will smile and say, we're going to fight you, but they wanted to continue the pre-existing non-conform industrial use of the site, and they figured they bought the corporation, they already are using it that way, and, you know, that's not, I'm happy we've got a developer going this way. We've also had, as you look at economics for development, Bettendorf is very limited for low housing. Bettendorf doesn't have that much, what I would call, like, for example, Section 8 housing, which is a subsidized program that allows for people with lesser status income-wise to provide housing. There's been inquiries for density units that would provide that type of thing. Some communities are actually subsidizing those developments to try and make more lower affordable housing. I don't see us doing that, but this is a potential site. If this thing fails, that may become an ideal location to do something of that. I think the developer has been very open to listen to his neighbors. I've heard a number of things that he's done to modify his plans, move his structures around, agree to provide some fencing, but I do want to say that that beautiful site there that I grew up and played on as a little kid, the creek I jumped in off of Mossy Bank, that site, because of this kind of development, is going to be enjoyed by hundreds more people than there are walking on the bike path, but none of those people on the bike path are going to be restricted from going across this property because the city and the landowner, a number of years ago, came to that agreement to provide that access for the expansion of the bike path. And I don't think that those owners that did that should be penalized by this council because they were willing to open their land up and provide an access for some public amenities. I just have my own personal feelings on it. You know, as a real estate broker, I think that the, a single-family use there would be fully below any feasible use for that property and definitely would be limiting, you know. Who gets to have that? We're going to have one guy buy this property for 900,000 and build one house, and he gets to enjoy it? I don't think that's what, you know, is in the big interest of the city, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weindrich. Anyone else wish to be heard on this item?
Mark Krueger, 3512 Deer Trail Road. Just also want to reiterate the comments that were made by Rick and Jeff. I'm supportive of their comments. Been living in the property since 1994 on there, and I also want to say thanks to the council for all your work and everything that you do. Much appreciate it, so I want to echo that as well. I don't have much to add as far as the comments. I don't need to extend the comments any longer. I'm just supportive of their comments. The only else, other thing I can think to add is that the traffic flow between Middle Road and Central and State, every single house that's east and west of that, that two miles, almost two mile stretch, the only place to go is up the Middle Road or down to State and Central. There's no access out any other way. So you're talking about adding hundreds more cars coming out up and down that road, and that's the only place to go. And I know last month, there was another accident right in front of this property where another light pole was taken out, and as you come down the hill there, it is blind going down that, and there's a curve. And so there's people who are going down that road, come down there, and it curves right there, and I'm assuming somebody wasn't paying attention and ran into the light pole. But the thing I want to mention is I saw car after car after car after car coming down Middle Road, normal traffic. There was no place to go, and they didn't even know there was an accident there. They came over the hill and see the accident, and they have nothing to do but turn around and go all the way back Middle Road and access some other directions. So that's the only other thing I can think to add to both Jeff and Rick's comments, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Hello, and thank you for all your service. I live, my name is DeeDee Fowler, and I live at 3375 Oak Tree Lane off of Devil's Glen. I walk my dogs every day along the bike path, and I wonder how many of you council members actually walk, run, or walk your dogs along the bike path daily, so that you realize that it really is kind of like the gem of the city. And that particular, we moved there about 10 years ago, it was April of 2012, and when I told my husband's partner's wife where we had moved to, and she's like, oh, you back right up to the prettiest part along the bike path. And I think the bike path is what, like 14 miles, I believe, in total? And this is exactly the property that we're talking about. There's birds, it's quiet, it's tranquil, there's green, which is what, as a green space, that is what we're supposed to, keep our natural resources protected. And I understand and I sympathize with the brother or the partial property owner. I see where he's coming from as well, but as a whole, we're here to protect the community and do what's best for the community and the community's interest, and in this particular green space, I just don't see this as being a real viable solution and what's best for everyone involved, which is the community as a whole. And I'm very nervous, so I apologize.
You're doing fine.
And I even went there, and specifically, because my son's a geologist, and I went there, and what the first gentleman was talking about with the special geograph, geological, geographical formations, the rock formations, when we moved there, there was not this little plaque, but someone in the council or on the park committee about eight years ago, or at least in that period of time that we lived there, they thought it's special enough to erect a plaque of that geographical, like, rock formation that sticks out, and it's there. So it's special for a reason. Someone thought that it was special, and that's right along this property. And I realized it's not going to infringe on the bike path. As the gentleman before me spoke, the property owner, I realized the bike path is still going to be there, but it's the tranquility, it's the nature, it's the green aspect of it that I think we need to preserve, because once you build this, if this does go through, and then later on, in five years, you decide, wow, that was, the natural aspect of it has really been degraded, which is what people in this area have flocked to. There's no, you're not going to raise the buildings to the ground, like, what's done is done. There's no going back to preserve what we already have and hold dear. As I was walking today with my two dogs, I happened to stop at one of the homeowners along Devil's Glen, because they happened to be out with their dogs, and I happened to bring it up if they were aware that there was a large apartment complex being built, and they're about, I think they're four houses down from this property, and they have not received any word from the city. I realized maybe something was put in the paper, but in today's day and age, people get their information from so many different sources that it's really hard to centralize information, so I applaud you for doing that, but none of them have received any information on this. And so before you vote, I beg you to, I know you can't go door to door, but to send at least the immediate property owners information on this, because they have not received anything. And it's important, I mean, especially to them. And it was brought up just very briefly by the current property owner, and this is one of the things that I had thought of, is why not the city of Bettendorf purchase it? Like, why has that not been brought up? You know, you could make it into a community garden. What about a butterfly garden? We're the premier city. Don't just have everything now beyond Forest Grove. Yes, they have a 95-acre park there that's gorgeous, but this is something that's just as special, and keep, keep, keep this prize and don't forget about our corridor, and to keep putting money back in it, because it can be just as special as all the new development over by the Betplex, if not even more so, because we have the bike path, and so don't forget that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Please excuse me. If so, please approach the podium in the back, state your name and your address. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Before we move to the ordinance, however, I just want to make sure that council's clear. Chris, this is just a zoning and not a site plan discussion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. There were so many good comments, so I'll make a few comments of my own, and Mark and Taylor might want to jump in as well. This is a zoning decision. A lot of the comments that were made were probably more appropriate for a site plan situation. This would be a conditional rezoning, so there is a little bit more of a description of what would be contemplated. There's an agreement that has been signed with the exhibit as the concept plan, and I think Taylor and Mark are probably better equipped to go through some of the description of what precisely is in that concept plan, but I think the discussion of focusing on the factors for rezoning, which is in our 111513 of the code, focusing on the comp plan, that would be one thing that I guess I would like to say, the consistency with the comp plan and the future land use map in the comprehensive plan shows this as UMI, and R4 is appropriate in a UMI future land use designation, so I think that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. There was also a discussion or a reference to UMI in the zoning code and some of the description of UMI versus ULI, which is a natural confusion, because the reference that was made about what's appropriate in UMI versus ULI, that was actually a discussion of the development character area, which is a zoning designation, not the future land use designation. So I would just like to be clear that R4 is appropriate in the future land use of UMI, which is what's at issue here. The other, some of the other issues of, you know, traffic, I think Taylor and Mark might want to comment on this, but the concept plan, which is part of the conditional zoning agreement, does require a turn lane. So I think that that's another important point. There were a lot of comments made, so I reserve the right to jump in further, but I...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure council is clear what type of decision we are going to have and...
Which, and one more point on that, I mean, as a legislative zoning decision, this is what is best for the public. That is, what do we want as a city? What does the city feel is appropriate here? And the future land use map clearly indicates that R4 is consistent with that future land use, but it's a legislative decision. One other procedural point, being that this is a conditional zoning. We'll just want to make sure about, if there's something to be added to that, we don't want to close the public hearing. We need that agreement to be solid before we close the public hearing. If you're, we need that agreement to be solid before we close the public hearing.
And you're suggesting that we have the agreement? We've got the information in the packet.
That's right.
But if a council member figure, thought possibly that there is something else that would be done with the conditional rezoning, we would reopen or keep open the public hearing?
Yeah, if that were the case.
Okay. Mark or Taylor, you don't have to add anything. I just wanted council to understand where we were in the process because a lot of the comments were about site development, which we haven't gotten to. But it's somewhat germane because this is a conditional rezoning based upon the proposed site development. Does that make sense? Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Mayor, if it pleases you and the rest of the council members, I do have a few things I just want to continue to clarify.
Okay.
Really, if you will. And I think the first of them is, is that we're talking about a rezoning here. And you have all heard my speech before that these decisions are based on a continuum. And that continuum started when we did a comprehensive plan in 2017 in which we, as a public body with public input, identified this property as UMI. It actually has been that or similar designation for 30 years. So this property has been contemplated for a medium-intensity development, commercial or multifamily for over 30 years in previous comp plans and the current comp plan as well. When staff did their analysis, and Taylor did the bulk of the analysis, so I'll ask him to jump in. We did look at the existing neighborhoods, which includes a trailer park right across the street. And we found that there would be some similarities between that type of development and having some apartments across the street from them. We also looked at the height of the existing buildings, one of which is a barn that's roughly 40 feet tall. Another one that had burned down recently was an office in a house complex that was 30, 45, 35 feet tall. You did mention, counselor, that there's sometimes confusion in understanding our code, that there's a future land use designation. And that's what we look at to see where zoning can go. And then the types of zones that we have, we have a zoning code called UMI that gets confused with the land use designation UMI. And that was a confusion and one of the points that was made. We're talking about standard utility and zoning R4 here, and that is appropriate under a future land use of UMI. My staff did send in courtesy letters to everyone within the 200-foot radius. We also implored the developer to have a neighborhood meeting, which he complied with. And I think it was held at the library, if I'm not mistaken. There were several people from the neighborhood in attendance. And it was also posted with signs, and a P&amp;Z meeting was held. I just want to clarify those points. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
I think that's helpful. Taylor, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add that the concept plan, that was included in the packet and part of the, is almost identical to the previous concept plan that was at the Plan and Zoning Commission. It does contemplate and require, as per the agreement that Chris had mentioned, of a turn lane. And the townhouses are the same location, and the apartment complexes are in the same location as well.
Okay. Any questions from staff or from council to staff relative to the vote on the ordinance? Councilmember Adamson?
I don't have questions for staff.
You just want to, you'll have your opportunity to talk about it? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Questions for staff, okay. Then we will move to the ordinance for Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, and I do have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa zone map for 1200 Devil's Glen Road, R1, Single Family Residence District to R4, Medium Density Multifamily Residence District. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Webster with the second. Okay, discussion. Councilmember Adamson, please.
You know, in the 13, almost 13 years I've been on the council, the zoning things just make me crazy. And this seems, and again, I'll depend on you to explain this better. I, we've gotten a lot of information tonight. And I, and really, at this point, not really in favor of a high-density anything at that, along Devil's Glen Road from Middle Road down to State Street. It's a speed zone, it's a speedway now. And you're just going to add more density and more traffic? I think it's a terrible idea. But when do you nip it in the bud? Is this the time to do it? Or is it, so I'm depending on our attorney. When can I oppose this the most efficiently?
Yeah, I mean, I think as we've, you know, land use issues are confusing because there are different types of land use issues. This is a zoning decision, which is a legislative decision, not a quasi-judicial decision, not to get too lawyerly. But essentially, these are, these are decisions that there's more discretion. The, there's more discretion with the council to do what you think is in the best interest of the public and what meets the criteria, which is set forth in the code about what you look at when you make a rezoning decision or a zoning decision. So I think it deserves a good discussion. It deserves good thoughtful analysis by all of the council. If there's a desire to, one issue with turning down a rezoning is that the applicant can't come back for three years unless it's significantly changed. And if there are questions, I think that the better course of action would be to table it or postpone it for, get the questions out. Let us, you know, further review it, if that's the case. I just, I just want to be clear that, number one, it's a zoning decision. So it's a legislative decision, there's more discretion. If you turn it down, there is a pretty significant impact. And so I think we just need to, those two points need to be clear. So if, I'm not sure if that helps or not.
It does, thank you, sir.
If there was a motion to table, you would want the public hearing to remain open? Or we'd reset a second?
We could just reset it. We could reset it. If the conditions that were placed upon this, if we felt that there were more. I feel, I mean, that it was very well-vetted. It went through three iterations of the concept plan. It requires now a turn lane. The density is far less than it was initially. But the key, just from a statutory standpoint, is that the conditional zoning be agreed upon and signed by the landowner prior to the adjournment of the public hearing. So we could either reopen it tonight and leave it open?
I'll do whatever you want.
I think we can reopen it tonight and leave it open.
We can.
And then, as opposed to having to republish notice.
I certainly want to, to, if you're staying up for three years, I certainly don't want to do that. So if we could, but if I'm forced to vote on it tonight, I'm not going to vote on it. I'm not going to vote for it.
So-
Now, I think from a staff perspective, I would recommend that we reopen the public hearing and then table it for two weeks. That'll give you time to, at least next meeting will be, answer, have staff answer questions for you. And we can, certainly two weeks, a two-week delay is not anything that's unnormal. If we were going to go beyond that, then I would agree with Chris that we would then start all over with a new posting. But I think, from our perspective, I think we would recommend you reopen the public hearing and then table it for two weeks, at which time we can answer the questions that you might have. And Chris can further advise you on the legislative perspective, which should not be, which should be taken very seriously.
I also want to state that I am not questioning or saying anything about the staff work or all the work that's been up to this point. I just, there's been so much information thrown at me tonight that I can't comfortably vote on it tonight. So I think I'd like to-
We get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Open the public hearing.
Nicely done.
I'll second.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Hang on a second, let me put this down. For the motion. So we're making a motion to reopen the public hearing. And you could certainly vote on that, Your Honor, and continue discussion because then your hearing would still be open. To reopen the public hearing.
Needs to be postponed.
Then we'll get this.
Are you prepared now to call the roll on the motion to reopen the public hearing?
Yes, Your Honor.
Awesome. Michelle, would you please do that?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Nauman, you wish to be heard on this issue?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Greg. There is a lot to unpack here. I mean, and clearly, we have pride, we have pride as a council and an elected body to be respectful and responsive to the constituents that come here. And it takes a lot, like you said, it's nerve-wracking, it takes a lot of courage. And I think we beg that kind of interactivity with our citizens. And I think to be respectful and responsive, we have to review this. And frankly, I didn't anticipate that there would be as much of an outcry. And I agree that it's going to be very difficult without additional time to go through this and look at all the perspectives. But I don't think the public should also take that as a, that the council's against it. I just think there's so much to go through. And everyone was so eloquent and well-prepared, just so grateful for your interactivity and participation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baden?
Thank you, Your Honor. Number of times I heard public safety mentioned. And I would like to hear from the police department whether they think that is an issue in this. So, not necessarily tonight, but maybe Chief Kimball could get back to us during this two-week period?
We'll get some information for you. I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay.
Councilmember Webster, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to give my concerns so that way that they're, my quick concerns, so that way they can be looked at and staff knows, so I'm not hitting them in two weeks. The first concern I have is this is a, is a buffering themselves in a side yard. So you have R4 going up against a lighter district in a side yard because of the house directly to the north. Typically, we like to do that in rear yards. And my second thing is exactly what Alderman Baden said, was is the concern of traffic coming down Devil's Glen Road. Hearing and finding out more about that. I realize that warrants may not put a traffic light there, but this may create the warrants eventually because of, I drive that stretch. I know what it's like. So that's ultimately my concerns for somebody to figure out.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay.
Please.
Lisa?
I just want to throw out some of my concerns. I think it's far too dense for that area. And then I had the big concern of the traffic as far as Frank and Scott. So bringing that up. I'm worried about the density. You know, we just spent a lot of time cleaning up that trailer park area down there. And I'm worried that this area will become kind of a nest also. So we're going to be creating kind of a mess. I had to label it before that. And whoever said we don't need affordable housing, I think it was you, Jeff, I disagree with. I mean, we've been screaming for the need of affordable housing for years in Bettendorf. I mean, we've got people that grew up in Bettendorf that aren't able to move back. And I mean, these aren't houses, these are apartments. And so, and just to clarify, as far as the city jumping in and purchasing, you know, an area, this would be great to do that, but with the individual that owns this, you know, they're going to want three times the amount for the city to jump in and do something constructive for the city. So unfortunately, that's not possible, this area. But anyway, that's all I've got.
Any other comments? We're going to leave the public hearing open. We will revisit this at our next meeting. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I'd like to motion to postpone Item 16, the rezoning of 1200 Devil's Glen from R1, Single Family District to R4, Medium Family District.
Second.
Second.
All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take this up at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, the first Tuesday in June. We move to number 18, a third and final reading of an ordinance for Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa zone map for properties generally located southwest of the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Criswell, A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R3 Mixed Residential District. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second. Any discussion on this item?
Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
And the next and last item on tonight's agenda before consent is another third and final reading for Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amending Section 11-11B-12, Subchapter L of the Bettendorf City Code, Supplemental Development Regulations. Open space on lots, fences, and walls. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second any discussion here, third and final reading. All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed both our third and final readings. We move to the consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the same at this time.
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any particular item on the consent agenda? Any council member would like to discuss at this time?
No, sir.
Jerry, anything on consent?
No, thank you.
All righty. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved our consent agenda. It's time to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work. Appreciate your insight, and thank you all for-